These three, uh, what, these three budgets and we didn't talk to them at this point.
Sometimes they're down.
I need one.
Yeah.
Good.
I think they're on that table.
Glad, okay, so I remember it correctly?
Yeah.
You guys want a cuss?
I'm good.
Aren't those good?
Sure. I'm domesticated, I really am.
You've been trained.
I was trained, I just elapsed, elapsed in judgment.
All right, good evening, everyone, and we're gonna call to order this special meeting for Stillwater City Council, April 9th, 2015. On the consent docket, we have one item. Does anyone wish to remove that item from the consent docket?
Nope.
There are motion on the consent docket.
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
I have a motion, second to approve the consent docket. And that is approved five to zero. That's gonna take us down to general orders with our preliminary presentation for the next coming fiscal year budget.
Well, that's all right.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We hope this is gonna be briefed tonight. Let me give you just a little overview of what we're going to do. We're gonna approach the budget slightly different this year. Uh, I think it's gonna be an improvement. This is, um, a format that we believe is what we've been hearing the council members ask for, for the last year or so, and we're trying to put it into a different format. Um, what we're gonna try to do this evening is not go into the, all the numerical details of our budget. In fact, they're not all ready to present at this point, and I'll explain that in a few moments. What we would like to do this evening is take time to basically give each, give the public, give the council, a description of what we have accomplished in each of our departments in just a few words, and what the public can expect to see in each department in the coming year. Whether this is simply a continuation of services, whether there's gonna be a slight change in services, or some other aspect. Or if we've made some organizational changes, those will be explained. Um, we're not gonna go into a lot of numerical detail at this point, and we'll explain that a little more as we go. Uh, this, to give you a little background, the first thing we do is look at all of last year's operations and expenditures and examine those to see if there's any place we can make some reductions or improvements. Uh, the philosophy every year is to see if we can make, streamline the process, to streamline the use of resources, and at the same time, deliver a better quality service to the public. Um, I think we do that in some cases, and in cases tonight, we'll explain where some of those changes have been taking place. We also then begin looking at our revenues. It's been an interesting year in revenues. It's been relatively a, a flat year. We haven't seen a lot of growth over our previous year in revenues. Our major sources of revenue is, of course, our sales tax and our utilities. And both have been relatively flat compared to last year. The good news is, last year was an extremely good year. So being somewhat equivalent to last year is not bad news. That's good news that we are stable. Uh, for sales tax standpoint, last year was kind of a record year almost, with an 11% increase over previous year. That was not typical for Stillwater. We normally experience four or 5% growth in a good year. But we're staying relatively equal to that, which is good news. Now, last month and this month, we're beginning to see some downturns in that. And it's one of the reasons why we're gonna present some limited recommendations tonight, because we need just a little more time to refine projections. Um, we'll present to you tonight, uh, our proposal for the operation budget of both the general fund and the SUA, and all those departments. And when I say operating budget, that will be everything except capital needs. We often do that. We will talk about the, the personnel costs, materials and supplies, uh, services, the basic cost of operation. We will identify for you what we have identified as major capital needs that we believe should go in several of the departments. It will give you an opportunity to hear those, it will give you an opportunity to discuss those with, uh, your constituents, it will give us an opportunity to provide that to the public as a topic for the budget fair on April 27th. But we don't yet have them actually plugged in numerically into the budget. Um, the reason is, we're still refining the projections of our budget. I've given you a handout sheet, which we will give you the basics. Uh, you can see that the total general fund and SUA budget last year, which is to the left, the total budget was a hun- a hundred, uh, million, nine hundred and two thousand. You'll see to the right, a number of ninety-four and a half thousand, four, or ninety-nine, ninety-four million and five hundred eighty-four thousand. The reason that's on this draft is smaller, is again, last year's budget of a hundred million and, a hundred and one million included the capital expenditures. What we're presenting tonight is everything except the capital expenditures. Again, reason being, uh, if our revenue, uh, our ending balance this year plus years, next year's projection will yield a hundred and one thousand, as it did last year, we would propose to come back and insert that, uh, seven or eight million dollars' worth, or six million dollars' worth of capital, uh, needs into the budget. When we refine our projections over the next week, ten days, it's possible that that total may be less, because of the slight downturn in sales tax, because of lower utility sales, because of mild weather last summer, that's part of this fiscal year. Our ending balance may be a little smaller than projected. So we, we wanna be cautious and not present to you a list of expected capital budgets tonight, and then come back next week and say, "The projections are going down, we don't think we can do all those." So we're gonna discuss them, but leave them out monetarily at this point. Um, again, we don't have, we don't have a lot of visual presentations tonight. Our objective tonight, again, is to give everyone a description of what can be expected from the city services in next year with this proposed budget. Um, after this meeting tonight, our, our intention, in the next week, ten days, is we want to prepare what I call a budget and brief. Uh, it will be a very customer-friendly document that will have a description of each department of the city, and the SUA, what it does, what the public can expect from that department in the coming year, and then it will provide the total cost of that department in terms of its personnel, and so forth. So it will not be the traditional six pages of detailed numbers with terms people aren't used to. Those spreadsheets of numbers will be available to anybody who wants to see them, and we will have them online. But we'd like to have a, a document which explains the story of our city next year, and what we intend to deliver to the public with the budget. So given that, I'm not gonna delay a lot, we're gonna try to keep this brief tonight, give you some opportunity to think about it, and again, once you hear tonight, we will put into some, uh, public documents in the next several days, and get it on our website. We will try to get copies out to the library, to the community center, other public places where people can pick up hard copy, or they can go online to see it. And we wanna get that out to everyone, uh, in advance of the budget fair on the 27th. So people can come and talk to you and say, "You didn't have something in here I would like to have," or "You have something, uh, presented we don't like," and that will give you some feedback. So I'm gonna begin tonight, uh, 'cause I have the smallest and simplest one to, to explain, and then what we're going to do, instead of, uh, asking all of our twenty-seven odd divisions to come up here, uh, we often refer to the admin team, uh, or the administration team, admin team for short. They're gonna make the presentation tonight. There are five of us all together, myself and four others, Marcy Lamb, Norman McNichol, John McLennie, and Dan Blankenship. And each of those four people, on a day-to-day basis, deal with different segments of the service delivery of the city and, and its trust. And, uh, among the four of them, they will cover all of the departments of the city, and give us as concise and understandable overview as we can. The, uh, my primary department is the city manager's budget, and we are projecting, uh, and proposing zero increase in that budget the coming year. It's a relatively small budget, uh, it includes myself, administrative assistant and receptionist, and our operating materials and supplies. Uh, I think it's, actually goes down two or three thousand from last year in this draft, but it's, it's relatively a flat budget. Um, that office serves as, obviously, as an oversight management office for all operations of the city and all of the trusts. Uh, we, everything is transmitted and funneled through that office, and it's also the central, uh, point of contact for citizens who need information. It's a central point of contact for all those people having business to conduct with the city. And through that office, we then, uh, connect citizens and businesses with their proper, uh, components of the city. And that's the basic service. I don't see any changes in that. Again, we, uh, we commit, uh, in that office to provide quick responses to the public, friendly public service, and we're gonna continue to do that. And again, with no increase in that department. So given that, I'm gonna ask Marcy Lamb to come forward and discuss the, uh, the budgets in each of the divisions that, uh, she deals with.
Good evening, I'm Marcy Lamb. I'm the chief financial officer, and my areas of responsibility are the finance department, the IT department, information technology, and I oversee the, uh, bid coordinator for business improvement district number one. Uh, first off, with the finance department, the finance department includes accounting, it includes municipal court, and then also the city clerk's office, and the deputy city clerk, um, is included in the finance department. One of the major, um, projects or, um, initiatives that's going on in the finance department also involves our IT department. We're converting, uh, to a new software platform. It's been, um, fifteen years since we had a change in our financial system software. And, uh, we're scheduled for a go-live on July 1 of our new system, and it's called One Solution. You've before heard us refer to our software as HTE. And, um, this is kind of a, um, evolution of the HTE product, um, with other companies that they've purchased. Uh, so that's our main initiative in the finance department. It's, it's also a big part of IT. And municipal court, uh, of course, they collect the traffic fines and other fines that are processed through our municipal court system. They also, uh, collect parking fines, and, uh, they distribute some of the parking fines in different areas back to those areas, like campus corner and, and down on the strip, and down in the bid district. Our IT department, um, they are very busy folks, and they have approximately 350 desktop computers and over a hundred laptops for police, fire, and field employees. They also maintain our phones and other, um, mobile devices. They run over fifty virtualized servers, which means we don't all have to have, uh, every system on our desk. Um, and then they're, uh, also servicing twenty remote sites, and they're all connected to our network. They also provide a lot of training to our employees, and they have a training lab that'll hold up to about, uh, twelve students and a trainer at a time. Um, the finance department, and the increases that you see in their budget, uh, on the sheet that's in front of you, are mostly due to a reorganization that we've done. Um, we have not added employees since, uh, I think, 2001, 2002. This year, we added, uh, two new employees, and we, um, made a, about three or four promotions to some long-term employees, to better utilize the structure that we were putting in place. And then we also developed some positions that have progressions in them. So a staff accountant one, and over years of experience and, uh, skill set, would move to staff accountant two, that type of thing. Uh, so that's the increase in our personnel light items. And our other services, or our servicing fees, those are, are probably our biggest expense in that line item, is postage. We have all the postage for, uh, everyone in city hall, and some of the outlying departments bring their, uh, mail into city hall, so that's one of our big items. Also included in there are audit fees, uh, fees that we pay to actuaries for different services, uh, related to our, uh, financial reporting, and then our arbitrage calculations. The increases that you see in IT are due to, uh, maintenance contracts on software that they've been implementing over the last year or two in the police department. And, uh, there's about $24,000, uh, to cover the new maintenance contracts for those. And that's the major increase in the IT department. The, uh, bid, bid division, uh, normally, that board will present to you their budget sometime after the first of the fiscal year. They usually wait till they get their ending balance, um, nailed down at, at year end, so that they know what else they have to work with. That is a restricted fund, and so, um, they are restricted by the amount of dollars in that fund. So they, they look at that budget very closely. So for the purposes of the budget you would be asked to approve, uh, they will basically have the same budget that they had last year, until that board brings forward that request to you to change it. Some of the, um, capital items that we're looking to possibly fund in the budget, uh, they're all in the IT department. Uh, the first one is a, uh, city-owned fiber optic network with some of the, well, with the improvement with the power generation station, um, we have an opportunity to, um, kind of loop around the city. They're going to have certain requirements for some of the communications and security that they will need at that plant, and if we start working on some of that, um, connectivity, it may make sense to, um, create the rest of the loop around the city. That's an item that's been in the budget for, um, a year or two, and hopefully, we can possibly, uh, fund it this year. If we did fund it, uh, we would probably look at doing some type of lease financing, um, so that we wouldn't have a major hit to the budget all in one year. Uh, that approximate cost is about $4 million for that item. The other, uh, one of the next items is, um, some upgrades to the One Solution, uh, package that I was telling you about earlier. There are two modules in there. One is, um, for our employees to use, basically gives them an online tool that they can go out, they can look at their pay stubs, they can look at their W2s, um, they can do some what-if calculations, um, they're, um, we were looking towards going to a checklist, uh, payroll system, and paying all of our employees by ACH, and that would enable them to be able, uh, to access that information. It also would save staff time in looking at some of that information that gets lost or misplaced, uh, from time to time. The other piece of that module, um, works on, is a mobile piece, so some of our staff people that are out in the field, um, would be able to use their mobile access and get into the software from their mobile devices. Um, that, uh, capital item is about $95,000. The next capital item is, is one of our most critical ones, and it's, um, the storage area network. And the storage area network, um, that we have, has been working and, and doing okay, and it allows us to have those virtual setups that I was telling you about, which saves us a lot of, um, you know, thousands of dollars in unnecessary computers and hardware and, and other devices. Uh, the problem that we have is, we were looking to, uh, forego this replacement for maybe possibly another year or so, but our vendor is, um, going out of business and leaving about seventeen hundred customers, uh, without access to any upgrades, maintenance, um, or service on that system. So we're looking to, um, basically replace that a year early, and that item's gonna run about $250,000. And that's, concludes my report.
I have one question for Marcy. Marcy, this is my, uh, last budget rodeo for the city, for all practical purposes, and there's one item that I think the city manager would probably ask you to help him with if this was put on him, uh, and I'm gonna try to. We've talked about studying and resolving exactly how big of a fund balance does the city need, for all purposes.
Yes.
We never resolve it.
Right.
What I would like to do is determine, you know, what is the size of the fund balance that we need for the basic need of, uh, receipt and disbursement management? How much cash do we need to have seasonally adjusted for the year, from the beginning of the year to the end? How much cash do we really need? And then secondly, there are unforeseen things that happen randomly, uh, not every year, but some years, you don't put those in your budget, but you have to prepare for emergencies, and you also have to plan for opportunities. So I could see having some money set aside for that purpose as well. But anything above that is flex in your budget that we don't have defined, and what I'm curious to know is, where are, I, I know we, uh, obviously have enough cash, or we would've been hearing reports from you.
Yes.
Because we're paying our bills on time.
Yes.
My suspicion is, in the absence of having it well-defined, we have more fund balance than we actually need for operations. And I'm wondering if we have some opportunity to address some of these capital issues that you're talking about, by looking at our fund balance. So, uh, Mr. Mayor, city manager, I, you know, this is my budget, I've, I would feel like I failed as a councilman if I didn't get this one thing done after all these six years, is, we really need to define what our fund balance need is on the city side. And I will say, probably for SUA as well. What's their cash need on a, you know, seasonally adjusted basis? What are their opportunity and emergency needs? And anything beyond that is something we should discuss. So, okay, I feel better now.
Do you have that question?
I have a...
I would like to say that, um, I would share, uh, that goal with you. We have tried to address that, uh, a number of times, and we have, um, access to several different types of information to try to benchmark that type of, uh, policy on, and we would be happy to present that to the council.
And we may be perfect, but I would just like to know that we've thought about it, considered it. And one thing I didn't add was, we've just been through a pretty serious downturn and survived it. So the notion of stress testing our budget, what happens when sales tax falls by whatever, we just had an experience that we can build on and learn from, that would provide, you know, a safety net.
Right.
You know, by knowing what we, we just experienced, we can make plans now, I think, that we might not have been able to do eight or ten years ago.
That's correct.
So I'd, I'd like to do that if we could this year.
We do also build in about a $250,000 contingency, or actually, I think it's more than that, about three hundred...
It's supposed to be three.
Yeah, $300,000 contingency, um, for some of those random items that may not be random enough if they're large items, but, um, we do have a little bit of contingency that we plan for every year.
Thank you.
Ms. Lamb?
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to ask Norman McNichol, our public works, uh, our public safety director, not public work, to, uh, discuss the sub, his divisions. Mr. McNichol?
Good evening, Norman McNichol, Director of Public Safety, responsible for the airport, police, fire, and emergency management. So, uh, we'll begin with the airport. Uh, operations budget for the coming year is, uh, projected to be $1,925,817. Stillwater Regional Airport is the fourth busiest airport in Oklahoma. They reached a record last year, traffic, number of traffic that they had, sixty thousand five hundred and sixty-one air operations in 2014. Jet nav gas sales peaked at 359,701 gallons. The airport handled sixty-one airline charter operations with 4,034 passengers. Identified capital projects are to remove an obsolete underground tank, which basically, because of environmental reasons, we have to do. Repair runway twenty-two, crack seal and seal coat the taxiway, repair a crack on the exterior of the terminal building. In preparation of architectural design for terminal expat, expansion, remarking runways, taxiways, and aprons, placement of roof on hangar number two, and a lot of that work, the seal cracking, replacement of sections of runway, and that kind of thing would be done by our very own operations division here at the city of Stillwater, and would save us a significant amount of money. And staff at the airport will continue to aggressively seek the implementation of scheduled airline service next year. Stillwater Police, Stillwater Emergency Management, and Animal Welfare are a combined fund in the sheet before you. And the Stillwater Police Department responded to 31,032 calls for service in 2014. Criminal investigations units were assigned 1,046 cases for detailed follow-up. Records Division processed over a hundred and ninety-seven thousand documents memorializing police calls for service. And I know I get questioned all the time, "Why are these cars parked in parking lots?" Well, they are preparing those hundred and ninety-seven thousand pages of documents from their car, which are automatically imported to the PD. Animal Welfare responded to 3,600 calls for service and has 2,238 animals. Emergency Management maintains citywide radio systems, outdoor warning sirens, flood alert system, lightning detection system, and they update numerous federally required emergency Identified capital projects are a use-of-force simulator, placement of eight police patrol units, uh, Animal Welfare would receive a new incinerator and repair to the shelter floor and doors. As you all know, or perhaps know, that building was built in 1983 or 85, and it's on a replacement schedule in the five-year capital plan, and it's gonna have, we're gonna have to address that at some point. Um, i- i- it's insufficient size, and there're beginning to be, uh, requirements from the Department of Agriculture, um, about exactly how you handle animals, and what kind of surface they could be on, and that kind of thing. Emergency Management would receive funding to maintain the rain and streamgate system and replace numerous closed circular cameras. And I think I told you that that would be at the tune for all three of those, $10,950 and 389, 10 million, 950,385 dollars.
That's for all of them, you said? That's for all three?
Yes, sir.
Ten million and something?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Ten million, nine fifty, three eighty-five. Finally, Stillwater Fire Department, total, again, in operations is 7,103,201 dollars. In the first nine months of the current fiscal year, the Fire Department responded to 3,285 calls for service. In addition, training errors to maintain the city's current ISO rating totaled 31,920. Maintenance of that ISO rating is very important to our citizens, because, uh, your casualty insurance rates are directly tied to that ISO rating. Uh, staff at the department worked to develop specifications for a new fire engine, which should be ordered in the next, hopefully, thirty to sixty days. Um, that was in last year's budget. Uh, the Fire Department's been authorized, in this operations budget, to purchase a van in the coming year by utili- utilizing rural fire funds. And rural fire funds are generated by fees that we charge for responding outside the city limits and for those contract services. And it's a dedicated contract services where you can buy kind of a secondary insurance policy for a hundred dollars, and it caps the charge that you would be charged for a rural fire run outside the city limit. Those are dedicated revenues, they have to be used for that purpose, and, uh, the Fire Department would purchase one significant fifteen-passenger van, I believe, to replace two existing vehicles which are used to transport, uh, fire personnel to calls outside the city. Questions?
Questions?
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to ask, uh, Mr. John McLennie. Uh, Mr. McLennie oversees several divisions and updates you.
John McLennie, Services Director, and my areas of responsibility are Transportation Department, Human Resources, Parks and Recreation, Development Services, and jointly manage the Operations Department with Dan Blankenship, and that's a new department that I'll be talking about, uh, as part of this presentation. In Transportation, operations alone is $760,000. That's the management and engineering functions of the Transportation Department. That's a decrease in that we have moved traffic control and streets to the Operations Department that I'll be talking about towards the end. Uh, so the, the basic function of the Transportation Department and the engineering areas is still the same. Basic essential services provided are 447 lane miles of pavement management, uh, maintenance for 28 bridges, and traffic signal system management. The capital program that we're looking at... The capital program that we're looking at this year is going to include pavement management, another 50 to 70 lane miles of pavement repairs, rehabilitation and reconstruction, traffic signal replacements, and then intersection safety improvements at Hall of Fame and Main Street. The restricted funds are also part of the Transportation Department. That would include the Transportation Fee Fund, which is generated by development, and then the half-cent sales tax. And that's projected at 3.5 million this year. That will include the Sixth and Perkins Road project, corridor signal timing plans for major corridors so that the signals begin to line up. If you go the speed that you're supposed to go, you can hit fewer signals as you go through town. The construction of Western and Hall of Fame intersection, that's a project that's under design right now, designed for Perkins Road from McElroy to Lakeview to deal with the traffic issues in that corridor along there where Buffalo Wobblings and Lowes and all of that is. Designed for Sanger Road from Sixth to 19th so that that area can be reconstructed. And then bridge rehab based on the biannual inspection reports. So as the inspection reports come in, we go and look at what needs to be done to the 28 bridges. Human Resources, 723,000, there's no real significant change in the totals there. Basic services provided are employment management, hiring, recruitment, things like that, training for safety and other things that employees need training in, management of compensation and benefits, and then making sure that we're in compliance with various employment laws. There are no capital items, but Human Resources does have some goals for the upcoming year, and one of those is a review of our compensation structure, trying to work towards a more market and merit-oriented structure as opposed to the current structure where it's based on longevity. And also assist with the development and implementation of skills-based pay, which is something I'll talk about under the Operations Department. Parks and Recreation is 2.6 million. That is a decrease for a couple of reasons. One is also because of the new Operations Department, the maintenance functions of Parks and Recreation have been moved to the Operations Department. And then a decrease because of our agreement with the Stillwater Area Sports Association, which has meant that we didn't have to hire near as many part-time seasonal people this year because they're handling all of that. Basic essential services include the community center, various special events such as the Arts Festival, management of the capital improvements in the parks, the tennis court project that's gonna be underway soon, renovation of various playgrounds, the municipal pool, the senior center, management of our public-private partnership contracts, which includes Lake McMurtry, Maltia and the Stillwater Area Sports Association at this point. And then Lakeside Golf Course is also a portion of that budget, about $800,000 of the total Parks and Recreation budget. The capital program for Parks and Recreation this year would include replacement of the Strickland Park Playground, which is reached the end of its useful life. We can no longer get replacement parts, so we're starting to weld things together that we really shouldn't be welding together at this point. A couple of other goals that Parks and Recreation has is to work towards expanding programming for the developmentally disabled. That's something that they're focusing on now that a lot of the sports programs have been moved on to the Stillwater Area Sports Association. And then the other thing that we need to look at is how to address the capital equipment needs for the golf course. The golf course does cover all of its operations, it costs with revenue, but there are capital equipment needs in terms of mowers and things like that that are not covered by that operations revenue. So we're gonna be looking at that this year and make sure that we can also cover that. Development Services is 1.5 million. That includes stormwater programs, which is currently a part of the Development Services Department. Basic essential services provided are management of the planning, development, building code enforcement and grants for the city, and then the stormwater programs management. Capital program this year is related primarily to stormwater programs. They're gonna be coordinating the replacement of a culvert, which is, I believe, made of wood under 12th Avenue east of Jardo. That won't be a budgeted capital item, but the Operations Department is going to do that with in-house labor and materials, and so stormwater programs will be working with them on that to make sure that that gets done. Several goals in Development Services beyond the capital plan include implementation and regulatory plan for form-based codes. That'll be coming forward to council on April 20th, the initial codes for that for review. Building safety progression is something that we've been working on for a while and we're gonna continue to. And what that is, is we've basically reorganized the building code enforcement area so that the employees are cross-trained to inspect both commercial and residential and all of the various trades in there, plumbing, electrical, HVAC and things like that, so that we have the ability to send inspectors out and they can do more than just look at one thing and hopefully that gets us moving a little faster. The other thing that it does for the employees is that it trains them, because we built this progression so that all of them, if they avail themselves of the training opportunities and advancement opportunities that are available, they have the ability to reach the point where they could be building officials. So that's how that works. We've also done something similar with a planning progression, and that gets our planners to the point where they can be city planners and also cross-trains them in various aspects so that we have a more versatile workforce. Another goal is the implementation of the paperless land use application process. We're gonna go to where everything is submitted electronically and not multiple copies on paper that take up space for us and cause problems for the developers also. And then based on the housing study that was recently completed, they're gonna look at housing and construction costs in Stillwater. The Operations Department that I've touched on a couple of times is a new department, and I'm gonna kinda explain how we, why and how we did that. It has components of both the general fund and the S U A budget. I'm gonna cover the general fund components and then Dan Blankenship will cover the S U A components. But what we did was consolidate the, most of our maintenance functions into one department. We consolidated the facilities function, which takes care of buildings like this, waste management, the water, wastewater divisions, street maintenance and traffic control, and then park maintenance. The benefits of that, that we have, that we looked at before we did it and we're beginning to realize now, is that we're cross-training all of the employees to do all of these jobs. They all did basically similar jobs, but they couldn't necessarily translate from one area to another. So if someone is trained to operate a backhoe, they're able to do it for all those divisions. They're trained to work on water lines eventually for all of our waterline projects. There's opportunities for advancement for the employees that they haven't had before. They are able to create for themselves, if they have the initiative, a career that they couldn't necessarily have before. It might be that you're hired and you're stuck on a mower and you're gonna be on a mower the rest of your life because you're in Parks and Recreation unless you wanna go work somewhere else. That's not the case anymore. There's gonna be the ability to establish a skill set for yourself, to train in that, to become certified in it, and there's a pay component that goes with that. We've also eliminated some of the redundancies that we had in those various maintenance divisions. We got rid of an entire warehouse full of stuff that's been gathering for about 20 years and not been used, parts and pipes and nails and tools and things like that. We have done away with 29 vehicles and major pieces of equipment. One of the things that we had was around 18 backhoes, and some of the backhoes would sit for six months out of the year because they were assigned to these various departments and other departments didn't, either didn't know they were there, couldn't use them because, well, we have to have it just in case. So that's one of the other things that we've been able to do. And then we've also been able to consolidate facilities. We've already moved the entire park maintenance division over to the Service Center where the Streets and Traffic Control Division was. So that building has been freed up and we've recently put the Department of Public Safety into that building. You guys might be remembering of that particular council report, and we're looking at what we're gonna do with the rest of it at this point. The general fund piece of the Operations Department is what we're calling Field Services, and that's a combination of park maintenance, street maintenance, traffic control and facilities maintenance. And it is budgeted at 3.7 million this year. Basic essential services provided, they do maintenance and repair of buildings, street patching and sidewalk repairs, snow and ice removal, traffic signal maintenance, right-of-way tree maintenance, mowing and maintenance of the parks and playgrounds. So basically, the functions that were being performed before by those various divisions are consolidated into this new Field Services Division. Capital program for this year is to replace the decking at the Boomer Lake Sun Deck, which is about 25 years old and is just about worn out. The other item that's on the capital list this year is to purchase an asphalt patch truck. We don't truly have a truck that can go out and do anything other than dump some asphalt in a hole and stomp it down real good and off we go. An asphalt patch truck that has all the tools they need to do the job right. They can cut it out better, they can compact it better, so this'll kinda move us to a better way of repairing roads in the future. And then another major goal is implementation of the skills-based pay plan. And this is another way of getting away from the longevity system where, and I mentioned it before, if an employee acquires a skill, and we're gonna have an entire list of skill sets that we need across all of these divisions, there will be a pay component to that. They get trained in it, they demonstrate that they can do it, they become certified, and that's how their pay is determined, based on the skill set that they have and that we can use across these various divisions. That's the basics of it. I'll try to answer any questions, and I also have a lot of backup if I can.
With the consolidation into operations, were any jobs lost?
There were no jobs. In fact, that's one of the things that we told the employees at the beginning, is that none of the hourly employees were going to lose their job as a result of this and there'd be no decreases in pay. As we move forward, if someone doesn't have the required skill set yet, they may be frozen so that they can't move forward until they get that skill set. But we're not gonna cut anyone's pay based on a lack of skills until we have a chance to get the system up and running.
Thank you.
Will the end result, I mean, the efficiencies of this system could result in fewer employees, couldn't it? I mean...
We already actually have five vacant positions and we're considering whether or not we're gonna fill those, but we also, in terms of doing this, will reallocate a lot of resources because there are things that were not being done that we can do now with the employees that maybe aren't gonna spend their time mowing grass and have a better skill set than just do that. And, yeah, fixed water leaks, air concrete.
Yeah, it's really an extension of what we started several years ago when we reorganized in that the first phase of the reorganization, when we created what we now call the admin team, that process eliminated over nearly a million dollars of upper administration positions, people that were in the $100,000 range. We eliminated four or five positions through attrition and through reassignment. But that created, the whole theory of that process is to streamline the oversight and administrative function and get more boots on the ground. This is the next extension of that, as Councilor Noah was saying. It didn't lose jobs, but what we're doing is we're gradually getting more people into the direct service delivery aspect of our government. And what's becoming consolidated are the managers and directors and supervisory, where they're becoming broader and having, so we're getting, the whole point is getting more direct delivery service employees and fewer in the upper levels of the structure. So it's an extension of that and we continue to think of that.
Examples that I can think of, I mean, just having this synergy has helped with figuring out new ways of doing things. We are going to contract out our mowing of all the parks for the next two months as a pilot program to see how that goes. We've got a price for that. That pulls people off mowers and fixing water lines. Another thing that recently got done is that the boat ramp at Boomer Lake, the parking area that was falling apart, was repaired by guys who know how to do concrete, which we didn't necessarily have access to. And it's every bit as good as it was when it was built, and that's something that's been kinda hanging out there for five or six years.
So more projects, more work, more efficient work, same, with the same number of people.
Same number of people.
Well, I remember, I don't, was it two or three years ago when we first, you started, y'all first proposed this to us? It made sense intuitively, but now you're far enough along the line where you're being able to tell us tangible outcomes of the reorganization, and this is nothing but an outstanding good news story. And we should be putting information together to communicate to the citizens to show them that you're being good stewards. You're saving money on positions, you're being more efficient, I mean, just so many, eliminating the needs for space and yet getting better quality work done. So, I mean, this rivals anything the private sector could do. So I really appreciate the report, and I think we're not, okay, tooting our own horn enough here. I'd like to hear some tooting.
And it's, I agree with the Vice Mayor, and it's one of those, you know, the question that you ask about employees, number of employees, it's one of those, that question can be misinterpreted or the number can be used to mislead when the real question is efficiency of dollars spent. And if we're getting better work, more work done with the same number of employees that are actually doing the work, that, like you said, that's a big win.
Another, I probably ought to mention, just comes to mind, is our repairs of concrete streets after we fix a water line. That has been dramatically reduced the time lag between water line being fixed and being able to get in and repair the street because the crew that goes in to do it has all the skills to do everything. We don't wait, you know, six weeks for the concrete crew to come in and fix the street after the water lines.
I've seen that, I've seen evidence of that, how it gets quicker.
.............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
end going, who are these people, and what do they do, and then explaining the money going towards each and who, who was in charge of what. The second budget year was when you did the silo picture.
Each, each of those columns were a silo.
And these, this, this flow chart, all of a sudden, this set of silos came in on top of them, superimposed, and now, three years later, we're talking about this? That, that is unbelievable.
We don't have silos anymore.
Sometimes external budget pressures can result in some good things, and I, I think you guys took advantage of the situation, and it came out to even better than what it was before the cuts.
And we hope it's created a lot of additional opportunity for all of our employees. I think they have a better, better feel of where they can be as a, as a member of this city team, so it's good.
To kind of go off of what Dan was saying about the, the admin reorganization, the, the fact that we did that is what's allowed this. The, the synergy that we have, being able to think about things beyond the traditional departmental lines, get us to thinking about how to do things like this, and, and it works really, really well. And I think two of us standing here is an example of one of the, one of the things that's worked really well so far.
Well, if you can work with him, then that's saying something.
Ain't that the truth?
He's scared of us, so...
Thank you, Mr. Blankenship. And, and Mr. Blankenship, before you start with the next one, I just want to insert a little thing here. When, when we're looking, Mr. Blankenship's going to talk about all of our utilities, which is primarily SUA. One thing, I don't want to make an oversight here, the library budget is a part of the general fund budget. But according to our charter, the library is under the management and administrative authority of the library board. The library board has submitted a proposed budget to my office this year, a very good budget, it doesn't have a lot of increases in it, has a slight increase in it for personnel. We've included as the, in the budget, as recommended by the library board, and I appreciate their work on that, but it is in here as presented. Just wanted to make sure that that's there.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Blankenship.
Thank you very much, Dan Blankenship, Director of the Stillwater Utilities Authority. Just, just a couple of words more about, not only the consolidation, but, but, but the admin team and, and the kind of cooperative effort that we're talking about between John and I extends also to Marcy Lamb and Norm McNichol and Dan Galloway. The five of us operate on a, on a daily, hourly, minute basis, that we essentially work as a single body. And we, we feel that it's very successful, and we've got a lot of cooperation and collaborative effort between the entire group. This particular operations consolidation, which we call Leap Forward, is just one good example of how your administrative team is, is working together to improve the services that we provide to this community. As the SUA Director, one of the things I want to, I'm going to talk about is, is the operating budget, and I want to bring to your attention that there's one thing unique in the SUA operating budget that you won't find in the general government line items in the sheet that we sent it out, and that's a, a direct slash indirect line item. And that is an expenditure for every SUA division in which, see, the SUA actually pays to the general government for the general government services. The city attorney's office provides services to the SUA. Finance, HR, IT, all of those general government services, there's a, a value to those. And we, our finance department does a direct indirect study, and they allocate the cost of those. And so that is an actual expenditure of the utility itself. And so you will see, as you look down there, and it's, I think, the last, last item, maybe, yeah, it's the very last item after debt payment, that indirect-direct. And I wanted to explain to you so you knew what, what that was, and that's the utility authority paying the general government for the services that the general government provides to the utility authority. Moving on in a division-by-division summary of the SUA budget, the, the first division in the SUA is the SUA Administration. The proposed operating budget is seven hundred and seventy thousand, approximately seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars. About four-fifths of, of that particular budget comes for, in the form of bank service charges, bad debt. We have to write off some of the collections that, that we cannot collect, and as Ms. Alexander, or, sorry, Mrs. Lamb, mentioned earlier, that we include a contingency in the SUA of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that's where that's located. The Customer Service Division, that's the division that does all the billing and collection and customer interface for the utility authority. We also do water and electric meter service and electric meter reading. We do not read water meters anymore. We have an automated water meter reading system. The proposed capital for our Customer Services Division is to replace three of the service-slash-meter-reader vehicles. Included in the SUA also is our Fleet Division. Our Fleet Division, they, they manage the entire city's fleet, with the exception of the Fire Department. The Fire Department has its own mechanic, but that consists of four hundred, approximately four hundred and seventy-five vehicles and drivable pieces of equipment, things like a weed, we've got a lot of weed eaters and other small pieces of equipment that are not included in that. Our Fleet Management Division also manages our, the fueling system, and then they do all of the setup of new vehicles, they do preventative maintenance, repair, and then as vehicles are surplus, then they, they handle the disposal of those vehicles. They do not have any proposed capital for the coming year. Next item on the list is the SUA insurance, approximately two and a half million dollars. That's what the SUA's contribution to our self-insurance fund. Our Environmental Programs Division, two, approximately two hundred and three thousand dollars. Maybe I'll let the mayor talk to you about environmental programs. I understand he had Chris Franks on the TV show the, last week, and, and they had a good visit, and, and Chris shared with you all of the things that they're doing.
I, I could do that, or I could direct them to the website, and it says it much better than I could.
It's got a bunch of stuff there. There, our Environmental Programs Division is two, two individuals, and they assist other departments with, and divisions in environmental compliance matters. A number of, of compliance issues that we have to deal with, with the state and DEQ, and, and they'll assist the departments in ensuring that they, they meet those. They're responsible for our industrial pretreatment program and our grease trap programs, and they also coordinate special events like the household hazardous waste, which I think we do a couple of times a year, and then Trash Off, which we did this, this last Saturday. And I understand that Counselor Darlington and the crew was tied for first place in, in the big trash off.
I'm still crippled.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm sure the people that use the trail, the Boomer Trail, behind the high school and up to Boomer Lake, really appreciate it being a lot cleaner now. The Electric Department, the Electric Department consists of three divisions, engineering and admin, distribution and warehouse, and then generation and transmission. The proposed budget for our Electric Department for next year is approximately eight point five million dollars. The Electric Department is charged, no pun intended, with operating, maintaining, and rebuilding and expanding the city's electric distribution, transmission, and generation systems. We, our, our number one project is the new power generation station. There's been a lot of work that's gone into that, and this coming fiscal year, we're actually going to see some physical improvements. We're planning to break, break ground this, this summer, and if all things go well, by the end of this fiscal year, or fiscal year, we will be at commercial operation and generating electricity out of that plant. That is approximately seventy million dollar project, so, and, and you've seen Mr. Smith up here, and he's shared with you all of the ins and outs, and a very complex project, but it's, it's going very well. Some of the proposed capital items that we're looking at for electricity this coming year would be to replace two of our bucket trucks. Those big bucket trucks run about three hundred thousand dollars apiece. We are typically budget about five hundred thousand dollars a year for system extensions. Whenever we have someone who comes in with a, a new project or something, we have to extend the, our system to get to them, that, that's where that money comes from. And then we also have some money, or we're, we have a proposal to replace some of the battery banks that are in our substations. The number one expenditure in, operating expenditure in the SUA is purchased power. That's purchasing our electricity, and we're expecting to spend about twenty-nine million dollars in the coming year to purchase electricity from GRDA. In the Water Department, the Water Department, proposed budget is approximately four point seven million dollars. The Water Department consists of the admin and engineering, the water treatment plant. The budget includes water distribution, but as Mr. McClain had indicated, the water distribution division is part of the Operations Department. But for budgeting and accounting purposes, it's included in Water Utilities, because we have to account for all of the expenditures in, in water, so that we can determine the cost of service of providing that water service. I think we've all remember the recent conversations we've had as part of the cost of service study, and, and so that's, that's where that comes from. The water, our, our Water Department, or our water, our Water Admin and wastewater treatment plant, and the operations part of, of water, which is water distribution operates, maintains, rebuilds, and upgrades the city's raw water system. That's the pump station and, and pipeline from Caw, the water, the water treatment plant, and then all of the, the distribution system throughout the, throughout the city and in the rural service areas also. Proposed capital for, for water would be three, about three hundred thousand dollars for new water system components such as valves, meters, things that our crews install throughout the year. We, we have a proposal for a tank mixer, we have a, a water tank in the rural area in which we're struggling with some chlorine residual issues, and so we would like to go ahead and be able to purchase a mixer that would allow us to, to add in chlorine and then keep the chlorine residuals up in that area to, to meet the environmental requirements. And then we'd like to purchase some trench shoring equipment. We, whenever we get into a, a deep trench, we are required to put in the shoring for to protect our employees, and over the past couple of years, we've been renting that, and it would be more, much more cost-effective to be able to purchase that, that, that equipment. Also, at the, at the water treatment plant, we have some variable frequency drives on the pumps. We actually pump water out of the plant into the system, and in one of our zones, we need to look at replacing some of those variable frequency drives. Our lime system, lime is one of the major components in the water treatment process, we need to look at probably designing a replacement for that system as it, as it continues to age and starts to cause us some, some issues. We have the water line south of Thirty Second along Perkins that we were here recently and talked about, and, and we're under the design for that project. And then we also want to, to inspect and evaluate all of our water towers, to go in and just do a checkup and see what kind of condition they're in, and determine if there are, we, we anticipate that there are going to be some improvements, but we, we feel that it, we need to go in and check that out first. In addition, on the water side, we also, all major water projects are funded by the Water Capital. For instance, Water Twenty Forty, that's an eighty million dollar project. That's by far the biggest project that we're working on on the water side, but that comes out of our, our Water Capital Fund. On the wastewater side, the wastewater side includes admin and administration and engineering, the wastewater treatment plant, and the wastewater collection system. Wastewater collection system, once again, is part of the Operations Department, but for budgeting purposes included in wastewater. The proposed budget for that is three point two million dollars. Proposed capital for the, is at the wastewater treatment plant, a couple of items we need to evaluate and, and look at our digestors and see if they need to have improvements or, or be replaced. And then another hundred and, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do the design of the permanent improvements of the South Interceptor. Mr. Millis was up here on Monday night telling you about, as one of the, the major pipelines that come into the plant is failing, and so we got approval on Monday night to make some temporary improvements, and this would be for the design of the permanent improvements. Also, for all major wastewater projects, we do have the wastewater capital fund at, at our, to, to use for those projects. Last but certainly not least, also as part of the Operations Department is, is waste management. Waste management, we do residential waste collection, commercial waste collection, street sweeping. We have our convenience collection center, recycling, and roll-off services. We provide the residential and commercial waste collection disposal services, the curbside collection of recycling. We also do commercial recycling, we process the recycling materials, and we provide roll-off services to customers who might need that. There is, there is no proposed capital, but we are working on the curbside glass collection pilot program. We anticipate, all indications to this point, it's wildly successful. It was, the people, our customers loved that we were rolling that out, we're having great participation, so we're hoping that we'll be able to continue that service without any additional capital or any type of additional expenditures, be able to just absorb that into our current program. Now, we do, we do have, and I don't know if you've noticed, on Main Street, a couple of what we, what are known as big bellies. Big bellies are solar trash compactors. And what they do is, instead of having, say, a normal can, this, this one will actually compact, uses energy that it, from the solar panels, and it also communicates with us. It has a communication device in us, in it, and we can check from the office and see how full it is. So it, it's kind of an efficient way to, to deal with the, the trash situation, because we don't have to just run a, a routine route. If it's three-quarters full, we check, then we can send a truck out and empty it out. One of the things that we'd like to look at for this next year is, is adding these, adding more of them in the, in the downtown area, and also take a serious look at possibly put them in the, in the parks, and think that we might be, be a nice benefit to having those in the parks. We will be coming back the first of June and presenting to you the annual financial review of our waste management services, and so we'll plan on talking with you at that time about the possibility of adding some of these big bellies to, to our system. All in all, the total proposed or operating budget for the SUA is just under fifty-three million dollars. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have. And I'd be equally as happy to sit down.
This is not specifically for you, Mr. Blankenship, but you and Mr. McClain together?
Oh, sure.
It's, it is very exciting to hear about the consolidation of the Operations Department, and it's, and it is especially nice to hear about how well you get along with the, the administration team. Do you have any formal way of evaluating how happy the, the people underneath you are?
We have, we have actually, we've done surveys, we have provided them opportunities to give us feedback, whether anonymously, we, we provide cards for, for those individuals. And, and Mr. White, would you like to come up here and, and help me and kind of explain some of the things that you've done to gather feedback from our employees? One of the things, as we were going through this process, we created what were called change teams. We had a vision, and we said, okay, we're going to go to this place on the roadmap, but you all, employees, are really the experts in all of these things that we do, we need you to help us and tell us, how do we get to our vision? And I think we probably had maybe four different change teams, and that was just in the initial transition process, and we've continued that on kind of an ad hoc basis as things have come up, you know, rather than just saying, okay, this is where we're going to go, and this is how we're going to get there. We're saying, as management, this is where we need to be, tell us how's the best way to get there. But Mark, I'll let you go ahead and...
No, Dan's exactly correct, that's what we've done. We've enlisted these folks. We've said, here's, here's where we need to be, help us get there. And so we've actually had six or seven, I think we've had about six or seven of these teams that we've put together. We did some, requested some feedback from them, distributed through by five cars, said, hey, tell us the good, the bad, the ugly, and then we communicate that, that back to them as well. So, so those are some of the things we're doing.
Come a long way, I can remember, Mr. Blankenship, it's been over two years ago, I believe, we went to the library and had all of the employees come in, and we began to unveil the concept of what we call Leap Forward in this process. And a, a lot of employees got a little panicky at first, but we tried to get everybody calmed down and, and really tried to bring all the employees up to speed. down and really tried to bring all the employees up to speed with the concept. And we've tried to ease into this and use the employees in the process, and so it's been an overall transition. But employees have had a hand in it. We think the feedback is pretty positive from most of them, but...
Well, and along that line, one of the things we did do, you know, people, and I came from the private sector, but they talk about, you know, having the open door policy and all that. Well, we really did that. Chris and I moved down to field services. We office with the guys. We see them every morning. We're there when their day starts. We're there when their day ends. We spend our time up at water. We have a day where we office up there. So we're very readily available. They can talk to us. We communicate regularly. I mean, probably so much that we don't really have to schedule big meetings because we're always in their meetings, so...
We're not going to tell you that everybody's happy about it. We know that there are some folks that are still struggling with the concept.
Mm-hmm.
But we're certainly working with them. We hope that we can bring them along because we truly believe that what we're doing is really in the best interest of the community that we serve. And some of them have actually acknowledged that. I think one of the cards actually said something to the effect, well, this is good for the community, but it really isn't good for us. And so we try to remind them, you know, guess what? That's what we're here for.
Yeah.
If the community wasn't here, we wouldn't be here. That's our objective. And so hopefully, you know, we'll get folks, everybody to come along, but not everybody, not everybody will come along. John?
Just adding to what he said, a lot of what we're doing with this is we modeled it based on some things that the City of Edmond did, and we went down and we looked at what they did. We're trying to do bigger and better than they did, but one of the things that we did do was interviewed some employees down there, and there were a couple of employees who had quit, who did not like the changes, had quit and left the City of Edmond because they didn't like what was going on, they didn't like what had happened. But they came back because they saw that what they were doing with skills-based pay was actually good for them in the long run. So even though there are some people, yeah, they're not necessarily happy with this change, eventually, I believe, and I think Dan believes and Mark believes, that they're going to see that this is going to be beneficial to them. They're going to have a career path that they can go on and they can advance on that they don't have right now. And it's just going to take time to get there. But it was proven by those employees in Edmond that we talked to who quit and came back, wanted to come back so bad that they really worked at it, so...
Let me pile on a little something here while we're talking about all the great things that's happening. One of the byproducts of Leap Forward is the City of Stillwater Leadership Academy. When we started to, we got about, oh, maybe a year into starting to develop the program, and we started to develop the structure, and we started, and one of the things the change teams told us is, they said, we need to develop a structure, and we need to see what the management of this group looks like. Well, we kind of sketched out a structure, and then we started looking. It's like, you know, we don't necessarily need to have people who are experts in fixing streets managing those who fix the streets. What we need is good leaders, good managers. And so we talked among ourselves, and we said, how can we go about ensuring that we get the best possible person, the highest quality leader, highest quality manager to manage these new work groups? And we thought, well, we've got leaders in our organization. We just need to give them the tools that they need. And so we created what's now known as the City of Stillwater Leadership Academy. We hired a training coordinator, Ms. Lisa Jones. She helped us develop a program, and we went through a process, an application process in which any employee in the city could apply. And we had about a dozen questions that they had to answer. Basically, what we were looking for was people who had the natural aptitude or were leaders. And, you know, not only do we need leaders in these management positions, we need good leaders throughout our organization. We need good leaders on the crews. And so that's why we opened it up to everyone. And as a part of that process, we, there were some people who emerged that are now in supervisory or management roles in this organization that are over areas that they had never even worked in before, and they're flourishing as managers, and that's one of the real keys to the success because a lot of times, the frontline workers, their primary interaction is with that frontline manager. And if the frontline manager isn't bought in, and the frontline manager isn't a quality manager, you're not going to be successful. And that has really been one of the, it was a byproduct, but it's something that's been a real key to the success.
And the members of the first class of the Leadership Academy helped select him.
Right. They were the interview panel. We used members from the Leadership Academy, number one, to do the interview panel for our operations manager, and they actually made a suggestion and a recommendation that we hire Mr. White, that we make Mr. Knight the deputy, and then there was a third individual that we brought in as a team leader over our water and wastewater divisions, which we were having a lot of issues with. In fact, had released the supervisory structure there, and that individual's come in and done a fabulous, fabulous job. So that was another thing that we were able to use. Individuals throughout our organization, there was an individual from the police department, there was an individual from the library, and they were selecting the operations management for areas that they weren't even in, and they did a tremendous job of being able to do that. So it's almost amazing how much, I wish Mr. Weaver was still here to hear some of the more of the good stuff that has come about because of this Leap Forward.
I'm sure he'll watch the video.
I'm sure he will, yeah.
How many employees are you talking about in the operations department?
There were eighty-eight, I believe, when we got started with the reorganization. Mark, is that about where we are right now?
About 115, so...
Break down male, female?
Yes. You know, I don't know if we keep, I don't know that we, I don't know that we keep...
Trustee?
Yeah, we do, but I don't know that we, we hired and try and hire the best possible workers.
Great.
Irrespective of gender or race or anything else. So that's what we want.
Thank you.
Very much. I think we're done. Any more questions or tell me to sit down before I...
We're a little bit enthusiastic about this particular item.
That wasn't part of the scripted budget presentation, but I think it was good news. I, you know, it's what we've been working on for a long time, and we get excited about it, and I think you can tell by those gentlemen. One, I would like to, a couple of things additional on this operating budget. When I was up there, I didn't talk about general government. You find general government division. General government includes a lot of things that apply to everything we do. They don't apply to any one department. There's a lot of our service costs, our utility costs that we spend as a government out of City Hall, but it also includes some personnel, includes some City Hall maintenance personnel. But the one thing I wanted to talk about, it does include our public information and marketing division. Sherry Fletcher and her shop and Blake, and there's, that is a fairly new division in the city. We've had around for three or four years, but it continues to grow, and I think that, I think, I hope the council agrees, that we want to continue to get more and more information to our public, and that's a mantra. And we're getting to a point where people are beginning to appreciate all of those sources, and it's creating a larger demand on it. So there is a slight increase in this proposed budget because I've worked with Ms. Fletcher, and we really think we've grown to a point where she needs another staff person to keep up with the demands on information. And so that's one proposed increase that I have in the operating budget. Wanted to mention that. There are, so that total set of budget we presented tonight is basically the general fund and the SUA, the operating budgets, $94.5 million. You can see last year's budget for those same operation was $101, but again, that included capital. The capital items that you heard discussed throughout tonight would probably total something approaching $8 million. We don't know if we're going to be able to include all those items, but we wanted to discuss those. If we, again, refine projections, and we have $6 million or $5 million instead of $8, we're going to have to further look at priorities among those. There are another set of budget items that weren't presented tonight. They don't each have a story like we gave tonight. Our restricted funds, we have a fund that we will have to appropriate, the council appropriates every year, our debt service fund, our restricted transportation fund. Those are all confined funds that you normally will appropriate the balance then as the obligations throughout the year, the council will make decisions on those. The Water Capital Fund, the wastewater capital fund, we appropriate those funds, which means that they're available for the council to use, and then individual projects from those restricted funds are presented to the year. We will include those in the publication of the budget. The one exception in that list is the, so our economic development authority, you don't have a, your own, the trust doesn't have its own source of funds, but we do transfer to it every year economic development-related funds. That is not a part of this budget. The CETA has its own budget. That will be included. That budget includes funds for the chamber economic development contract for primary job recruitment, includes the contract for destination marketing, CVB-type of contracts. It contains the city's participation in the bid district and also our internal retail consumer economic development function. That budget is going to be relatively flat. I do have a proposal to include a person to work for CETA in helping coordinate all those, and that will be included in the next presentation as well. So that's pretty much, in a nutshell, where we are. We hope, really hope that the presentations, our intention was to give you and the public a good feel for what your city does. I think the most, it's, you know, I think it's more important for you to understand what the police department does with your money, and more important to understand what the operations group that you've heard so much about and every other division, what we are doing and delivering, than it is to talk about the details of the numbers and the spreadsheets. Those numbers are there. We want you to know what each division costs, but most of all, we want everybody to understand what you can expect from each department's budget in the coming year. That's where we are, and we can, you can entertain discussion tonight or request for some additional information. Our intent is to get this into a understandable format to get out to the public, get prepared for our first budget fair where you and staff, all the people, you know, I want to thank so many staff people tonight. Most of the division managers and department directors are all here this evening. Had you had any specific questions, they can deal with those. All of these people will be at the budget fair along with yourselves. We'll have tables set up. We'll have the information out where the public will be able to come and go, come and discuss with you their concerns, their thoughts. And when that budget fair is going to be about a 90-minute opportunity on the 27th, immediately following that, you'll go into a session where you can discuss what you've heard from the public, what you have heard tonight, what you hear from your constituents in between now and then, and hopefully give us some direction on putting together something as a total proposed recommended budget. So that's our intent, and that's our format this year.
I had one question. I was going to ask about website, and I guess that's under the, you just described general government?
Yes, it's included in there, yes.
Website update?
Yeah, we are going to make some changes to the website. I could probably let Ms. Fletcher talk more about that. She's been working with IT. That web, our website has grown tremendously over the years, and as it grows, we've made such an effort to put everything on it, usability gets a little different. So do you want to update us where we are with that change?
You want to do the...
Sure. Our website is about four years old now and is in need of some refreshing, especially when it comes to technologies like mobile devices and the way they access it. Brad Stewart, I'm the IT manager. So we've been considering a redesign, a renewal of the website, and we'd like to look at doing that in this upcoming budget year to include some of those newer technologies.
Brad takes care of the, this is Sherry Fletcher. Brad takes care of the IT side of it, and I take care of the content side. So whenever we do the redesign, we'll be looking at different navigation tools, including social media in with the website a little bit more, and looking at some search engine optimization that we don't have right now.
Do you have the, like, can you track how many people have used the SNAP thing? Is that something that's been, because I've used it before, and I think it's really cool. I just, I'm just interested to know, like, I know it's pretty recent.
We do keep records on all that. I don't have that information at my fingertips right now, but we can sort of get that.
Yeah, I'd like to just, I think it's probably an underused tool, and so I think with the website revamp, maybe there's, I know it's right there, but I don't know if there's something we can look at doing that more to.
Yeah, whenever the website is redesigned, we'll definitely look at making sure that some of the services that were added after the website was designed this time are integrated more. So that's part of the problem we have, that we keep adding services and stuff, but the design is not flexible enough to change.
Thank you.
Love the SNAP part.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions?
Thank you.
I like, I like what we see so far. I do think that we need, you know, more explanation when we, for the public, other than just what we're seeing, because it's hard to see a breakdown, and I understand that we don't, that you want us to know what the city does. That's so important. So that's good. But I also think that we need to see what each department is spending. And I like those pretty charts we talked about last year, the bubble charts that break it down, that makes it easy to understand. So I think a two-pronged approach would be great. We have this, now we know more about what each department is doing and each division, and love the operations staff. Don't worry about it. There he is. I think, and as soon as we can get that out, that if we're having a budget fair on April 27th, so we need to give people time to digest it so they can ask questions. And you can email us right now with questions so we can be working with everybody. So you don't need to email us. Public needs to email us.
I think we actually have a two-pronged presentation. This type of information, kind of narrative information, is so much more accessible to me, and as you mentioned earlier, all those numbers are available.
Right.
And...
And we'll make this available.
And I think with that two-pronged, you know, thinking creatively, how that can be, all of that information, or the important information, can be presented in a 21st century way that we can understand, and the bubble thing is, you know, a good start.
Right. You know, and what we get...
I just wanted to make everyone aware, I don't know if you were going to announce this or not, but just in case you weren't, we also have a public hearing scheduled for the budget on May 18th, and so there will be notice that goes out. So if anyone in the public misses the budget fair, they will still have an opportunity to be heard at the public hearing on the 18th.
Thank you.
And I was just going to say, kind of in response to Councilor Noble, is, you know, this format, and again, we've got the special funds, but I think this is kind of an attempt when we, you know, you hear that explanation, for example, of what Mr. McNichol told you about the police department. You can look at this and say, to do what he said, we're going to spend this much for personnel, this much for their materials and supplies to work this with, and this much for contract services to work with, and this much for capital. And that gets to be quite a few numbers just in and of itself. Now, I would need some guidance on what additional types of information you might need, or you, I mean, if somebody wants more detail than that, it's almost where we need to sit down and open the books and start looking at detail. I just need a clarification on that guidance. I appreciate what you were saying, but when you say more detail on the cost in each department, do you have examples, if I may?
Well, I would like, like you gave us in years past.
Okay, okay.
As well as this. It just needs to be simple to understand. This is a really good start. This breaks it down differently, but there needs to be also something that really details it out because some people in the public want to see that.
I like the bubble chart, too. I'm glad you mentioned that. I think it shows the true total cost of every operation in the city and where all the money comes from on one side, and we'll work toward that, too. I appreciate the comments. Thank you.
Sure.
I really have a couple of observations. I think one thing that can be helpful as we head into budget fair, and you've used the term, you know, customer-friendly, you know, you didn't say pamphlet, but the information to have ahead of the budget fair. One thing that, if I was coming in cold and a lot of people just want to compare, what did you do last year and what are you doing this year? And it gives you a comparison, I don't mean it's good to compare, but it kind of gives you some context. One thing that might be helpful is the narrative of the changes. We've got some fundamental changes that if you just simply look at what'd you spend last year compared to what'd you spend this year, I'd say, we hate parks, just looking at this budget. But that's not accurate. And so some narrative showing, you know, the decrease in the park and the decrease in the wastewater and the decrease in the transportation is because we have consolidated those into operations. But if you just proof text this budget, meaning lift from here on its own and lift from here on its own, it gets out of whack.
Really difficult to follow.
So in this customer-friendly, you know, publication, some narrative on that, the fundamental changes, I think would be very helpful. Another observation, it never ceases to just stun me that approximately one-third of our expenses are to buy electricity. It, I just fall over every time I stop and think about it.
There's money to make money, sir.
Well, I'm not saying it's wrong, but when we sit there and say it's a $100 million budget, well, a third of that is to buy electricity. The other two-thirds is to do everything else. And I think that's a very important point, again, back in the context of everything. And then my last observation on the presentation and in the specifics is, this is so much better than in 2010, my first year to ever care. Maybe that's, maybe not the right word, but to truly dig into and try and understand the why, the explanation of it, the understanding of why things are set up the way they are. It is explained so much better now. But maybe more importantly, I can see just by looking at the boring spreadsheet, we're doing things so much better now than we were five years ago. And I think that is just very obvious just from the spreadsheet. But then when you put the narrative behind it, you really understand how much more efficient this community is now than it has been in the past, and it's all been about changing attitude, changing organization, and a true desire by people to make things better. And that is greatly, greatly appreciated.
Appreciate those comments. I think, even if we didn't have the spreadsheet, I mean, everybody in this room is a part of just what I'm going to say and they make this happen. The one, you could, I can simplify in one sentence, I think, which is unusual for me, what we heard tonight. You have heard tonight that all of the employees of the city have developed a plan that will provide to the community equal or better level of service than we had this current year for no more money. That's what we said tonight. We know it's going to be no more money to do the same and more than we delivered last year. I hope that's a good news budget.
There's only one way to accomplish that, and that's being more efficient.
And that was my original question, just because I hear this out in the community, I'm certain the councilors probably do too. Just because we have the same amount of employees or maybe a few more employees, we're delivering a better service. It's not just about how many employees we have, it's what we're doing with the employees. And what we're doing with them is providing several more services we haven't before. So that's important to understand, really important.
And it's hard to do with numbers. It has to be done in explanation.
Got to be words.
I would like to see bubble charts, big ones, maybe at each station too, that really outlines what it's doing, if that's possible, if you're making, or an explanation. Headline, nice, short description of what's going on in a way that's easy to understand for everybody at the fair.
All right. Good.
Okay. So quick summation, the way you've passed out tonight's available. We'll have budget fair on April 27th. More detail, time and place?
It's going to be at the community center. The budget fair will be in the main lobby at the theater area. The Lowry Center gym is already booked, but that will give us a nice area to do that. And then the council and the public's welcome will go into a study session right after that in room 120, 121 there in the community center.
Okay, so that'll be the first formal meetings?
Yes.
And then May 18th will be the, is right now the scheduled public hearing. But just a reminder to everyone, you're not limited to those dates. Email, call, contact your councilors, contact your new mayor, and contact city staff to let them know what your thoughts are on the budget, good and bad and otherwise. Council, you have anything else? I'm sorry.
No, I'm just saying that's a proposed schedule, and I just want to make sure the council understands. After our budget fair and discretion on the 27th, if you feel there's a need for another public session before we get to the more formal hearing, we can always integrate that into the schedule as well.
And they can find this on the website right now?
Soon. It's not there. We're still, we, some of these numbers were still being worked on this afternoon.
Okay, so soon as in, I'm sorry to.
Next week, we will have some information on the, all this will be out there. We'd like to get it out there, you know, six, seven, eight, nine days before the budget fair at least. But we will have some information coming out.
Okay.
Anything else, council?
Thank you.
Nothing else on the agenda? Is there a motion to adjourn?
That's true, Jerry.
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn.
Did you go?
And Councilor is not here, and so that passes four to zero. We are adjourned.